Understood.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Start the roll call.
One moment, please, make sure.
I got it.
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay, Brenneman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Manning and Landzar is absent on notice.
All right. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Approve the minutes from the previous meetings, regular meeting of twelve seventeen and special meeting of twelve twenty-three.
Move to the twelve seventeen meeting.
I have a motion for the twelve seventeen meeting, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the special meeting from twelve twenty-three?
So who?
Second.
Any discussion on that one? If not, we'll vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Any bells, Karen?
No. None.
Public comments, anybody got any public comments they would like to make at this time? Not on the agenda. If not, I think we'll jump past the seven oh five hearing, we'll go to the second reading of ordinance six eighty-three to amend the defense regulations.
Motion to approve the second reading of ordinance six eighty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? No changes?
Nothing, no changes since first.
All right, we'll vote, Monahan.
Yeah.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Let's go to Deputy Ryan, you ready for your report?
I am.
We'll let you jump in and then we'll move back up to our hearing.
Awesome. All right, well, thanks for having me again, we actually had a decrease in calls for service this month or the past thirty days, which is kind of surprising, some of that have been doozies, so it makes up for that. As we read the wrap-up, we had twenty-eight civil paper services, an increase of four, five disorderly subjects, two family disputes, two frauds, one juvenile delinquency, three larcenies, one runaway, two DWIs, seventy-three traffic stops, a decrease of twenty-five, six checkable beans, ten medical calls, three of them were categorized as unattended deaths, two with CPR applied, six animal problems, two child disputes, three warrant services, only two snowbirds, which kind of surprised me, I guess when I was away there was snowfall, right? I don't know. Three traffic accidents, two hit-and-runs, one weapons violation, and that particular one was a child who brought knives to school, one assault, four motors assist, four suspicious activities, two multiple arms, for a total of two hundred and fifty-one calls for service, about eight point three seven per day. So today, we executed a tactical search warrant on home here in Hartford. Based upon a segment, looking for signs or evidence of child pornography production. I guess I'll just leave it at that, we collect a lot of hardware, and that's an investigation that we're going on. And even later, at about four o'clock, four-thirty, Sheriff Milstead actually was the person responsible for apprehended the chief suspect in the two armed robberies that we just had recently. It goes from the sheriff's house. He's just very vigilant, it just happened to, we knew what we were looking for as far as a vehicle, and he stayed with the vehicle long enough for marked units to get in position, they pulled him over, and that's about all I know. Okay. And so. Good on you, Sheriff. Patting the back. Absolutely. Do you guys have any questions for me? No?
All right, any questions?
Well done.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, you bet.
Thanks.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, we'll jump back up to our seven oh five hearing for renewal of the garbage hauling license for the city of Hartford for go-back sanitary, cressman, boltie, and RBS.
Okay, each one?
Give them all together.
Motion to approve the, what we got here, renewal of all city garbage licenses that apply.
Any discussion? Assuming everything's the same, they got all their big work in, Karen, according to what I seen in the packet?
They do.
Any other discussion? Not, we'll vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Brenneman?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes. All right. City engineer report. Got you off guard, we're rocking right along, you're off guard today.
I do need a little time to set this laptop.
Okay.
Do you want to go through the other reports that changed?
Yep, you bet, we'll drop down to Craig and we'll let you work on your stuff.
Well, I've no real changes to my report, worked on the streets a little more today, trying to get them, get some of that hard stuff off there, it loosened up a little bit, so I think maybe on Thursday, I think it's supposed to be back up to thirty-one, so we might go scrape a couple more, but we should have a pretty good shade, so. That's about all I got for my report, just like to say thanks for the little Christmas bonus and other stuff, so, thank you guys. That's all I got, somebody's got something.
Well, you are the longest man in your employ, you know, so. Pretty good there, though, thanks for the little Christmas.
I didn't mean it that way. Well, everyone made it sound like it was a
Wow. At least you got one.
All right, any questions for Craig? All right, did you need a couple more minutes?
Yeah.
Karen?
I have nothing to add to my report, the one action item I have was just to set the election date. Which is normally the second Tuesday in April, which would be April fourteenth.
All right. Anybody like to make a motion to that regard?
Thirteen, Karen?
Fourteen.
Fourteenth, I'm like, seven, eleven, three, so fourteen.
Second.
Any discussion? We'll vote, Brenneman?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brenneman, yes.
Can I ask you a question?
Okay, sorry.
Is there any discussion on the, maybe just disconnecting the overheads, the big streetlights on Main Street to see if that'd activate those other lights that aren't working?
I noticed one over here was working the other night, I just think with, we're not getting enough sunlight some of the days to get them to work, I know there's some issues I've been working with Jessica about it, I can certainly, I think these are all looked up together in one photo wise, so I could certainly talk to some of them about it sometime to see.
Just some temporary.
Yeah, it's kind of nice telling Jessica, it'd be nice to wait till, get some nice sunny days for a while and just see what they're doing and not doing, so, because I think there's some other ones that haven't been working either, right?
Well, if they're not turning on, be my opinion, that would just, it's not dark enough.
Yeah.
Too much light from the street, that's what I noticed one night I was down here and there was two or three of them weren't on.
I know there's been some chatter back and forth on it.
Yeah, the photo wise, then they know there's an issue with them, the photo wise are actually part of the solar panel.
Right, right.
So, I know they've been talking about a different design, we've been about the separate photo line that will go on, so that's something we might have to maybe see if they can.
Yeah, you guys understand.
Ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I didn't have anything specific in the report to point out, just one update that we had as an action item is, we have the Ninth Street plans ready to advertise, we just had them to the city staff to review and we're just finishing incorporating their comments into the drawings, so we will look for, we've already had a motion for me in the past, I think, to advertise here in January, but we just wanted to bring it back up onto the, on the agenda for review, so, like I said, the project's ready to bid, and we'd be looking to advertise probably next week with plans if you guys are ready.
Motion to allow Stockwell and the city of Hartford to release Ninth Street construction documents for bid.
Second.
Discussion.
When will the bid begin? It'll be about four weeks out, we haven't set a specific date yet, we usually have to advertise for three weeks.
We gotta for sure advertise two weeks, so depending on when those advertisement dates fall in the week.
We were in the first week of February, I think we were we've been doing Fridays, I think, so the seventh, probably the seventh or two o'clock is what we said.
Have seven? Any other discussion on this? Not, we'll vote, Monahan?
No.
Brenneman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Second thing you had on here was update the wastewater treatment facility?
Yeah, that's gonna be
Part of the
Later in the agenda.
Okay.
I think it's part of executive session, actually.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Review CIP?
Yep. Okay, should all have a copy of the CIP, hand it out, and just have that same document up on the screen, we're just gonna browse through page by page so that everybody can understand what's in there and what kind of information included. This is a, most of five-year CIP from two thousand point to two thousand twenty-four. Hard to read here, but we just, we have a little disclaimer at the beginning, the introduction that just says, no, this is not meant to be necessarily an accounting document, it's just meant to give some high-level information as far as where some of your funds and revenue sources are, high-level information as far as where these projects that we're selecting, how it affects your debt service and those types of things, so, let's kind of look back at that over there. The first section, you open up to page three and four, what we call revenues, it's all we're simply doing here is getting a brief description of all the different types of revenue sources, that's where the city collects funds, okay, so. When you browse through there, you can see on the left side just a narrative of all those different resources, on the right side is pie chart to give you a little bit of a perspective on percentages of where those funds are coming from, so you can see largely your property tax is your biggest revenue source at twenty-six percent, estimated twenty-twenty s revenues is one million, one point three million, you can see the totals of all those revenue sources available, your next is your sale and use tax and at eighteen percent, so you can see kind of a breakdown of those items. You go to the next sheet for called fund distribution, and all that is, is basically taking those revenues that are coming in and how you're allocating them into specific funds, so again, you have a narrative of the different funds that the city maintains, and again, on the right side is the pie chart of breakdown of percentages of where those funds are allocated, so basically the revenue comes in, a large portion of them going to the general fund at fifty-one percent, you also collect for sewer fees, it goes into sewer fund, water fees going to the water fund, you have some funds that are, we call project funds, but they're really just funds that are set aside in the general fund, you've been putting away money for certain projects, and that's what that pie chart represents. The next section on pages seven and eight is reserves and trends, on the left side, you have a bar graph of just, basically a snapshot at what we projected to be your end of year, two thousand nineteen, these happen to be collected during August when you guys were going through budget, so that's what that asterisk on the bottom is, so these are probably current as of that date in August. Working with city staff, it's pretty typical for, see Hartford to want to maintain six months of operating expenses in the funds, okay, so when we figure out the annual operating expenses, we derive at that six month, and when you look at these charts, that's what the tan section represents, is that six month reserve that you want to maintain, anything above that is green, and that's what we consider discretionary funds, okay, so those might be funds that you use to put down as cash for its projects, you can see you have a little bit of money in your general fund that's discretionary, the water fund is really healthy right now, you got quite a bit of discretionary funds, so when you get, when we get to our five-year capital plan, you'll see there's a couple projects that we're proposing to pay in cash because we've got enough reserves to take care of them. Sewer fund is this town's, it's got some discretionary funds in there, but not quite as healthy as a water fund. On the right side is just revenue trends, so you can see over the last five years, how your property tax has been trending, how your sales and use tax has been trending, again, we just updated these too as of January, I think Karen you provided us numbers just recently to bring those up to current, so those should be current for the year two thousand nineteen. Going on to the next page, nine and ten, this is section where we talked about debt service, and I kind of like, I kind of, we might need to come back to here a little bit, but this really reflects what the five-year capital plan is, so on the left side is your existing debt service, and anyways, generally with debt service, the city is capped at what that, you know, how well we can exceed there, you can only carry a debt service, you can't carry more than five percent of your, what's the term?
Assess value.
Assess value of your municipality, okay, that's what this purple line represents, that's that five percent mark, and we projected at a growth rate that we anticipate the town will grow, that's why it's going up in this interval, you can see the debts, as it gets paid, is coming down, okay, so that's what your existing debt schedule looks like, the tan lines is debt service that is what they call constitutional debt, okay, and the red is, you had some projects in the past where you went to a bolt to let those projects exceed that five percent limit, okay, that's the only way you can exceed that five percent limit is by going through a board of people, or by doing a surcharge or something to that effect, but that's what that red bar represents, is those projects they did in the past that would allow it to exceed that five percent, okay? Once we do the five-year capital plan, and we list out the projects that we're planning to do, and we work through that with city staff, and start looking at what your proposed debt is gonna be to take on those five years of projects, so on the right side, the tan is the same, is the same bars as these, okay, so the tan represents your existing debt, that still has to get paid off over time, okay, you can see there's still those red bars too, they're at the top here, kind of hard to see on this, but those red bars are still the top, they can exceed that five percent threshold. When we get to the capital plan, you'll see what these projects are made up of, so basically what we did here is, we know we got a big wastewater plant, project that's the green, okay, so it gives you a little perspective on how that project alone affects your debt service, the blue bars in between there are all the other projects that are proposed, a sum total of those, okay? What this tells me is with that, you know, when we bring this project on with the wastewater plant, we're gonna have to, you know, exceed that five percent threshold, we'll probably be looking at surcharge to be able to do that, because a surcharge allows us to exceed that five percent without having to go to a board of people, but the surcharge basically is something that, when you have a project that benefits the entire community, then you're able to apply that surcharge to anybody's bill, okay? We can come back to that if there's more questions that you want to raise. This is the twenty-twenty budget, we just went through this with staff and we tried to, you know, give each one of these lines a little bit of category, so you can see the twenty-twenty budget is five million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixty-one percent of that's going towards public works, seventeen percent is general government, seven percent public safety, eleven percent culture and recreation, and then four percent conservation and development. Next page is the start of the called infrastructure plan, so this gives a kind of overview of all the projects that we're considering within the five-year plan, and you can see those projects laid out here, these are the, you know, we show two thousand nineteen as the current year for the past year, if you will, in this, and then they show those next five years laid out, and if you go down the line, you can see, you guys can see the projects that are listed out there, but the first project listed is the Ninth Street project, which we just approved tonight to go to bid. The second project is a sewer extension project, and we're proposing to extend sewer to the industrial park, North Town, North Park Town. Number three project is Highway thirty-eight Water Main Extension to Turtle Creek, if you remember when we were doing Nicholson Road, there was four phases of that project, and we really constructed the first two, which is the second Nicholson Road, but the third phase was that connection to railroad someday, the fourth phase was this Water Main connection, because as Turtle Creek develops, right now, their first phase is only going to be on a one-way feed, and we want to make sure we get that main looped in the future, Jarden Division is also on that one-way feed, which is fine in the short term, but once we start getting roughly thirty properties or so on, then we want to start making sure we have those things looped in case there's an issue with that main to go on, those people will be without water. Back project, we have, we have a plan for construction in two thousand twenty-one. The fourth project is an intersection improvement project that grew in Olko Land Intersection, we've got a budget for that for next year, so that's what's showing up there, that's a smaller project on the list. Number five is the wastewater treatment facility and the sewer extensions that are involved with that, we're gonna talk about that later tonight as well to give more detail on that, but, you know, we've been talking about trying to get our arms around what the total cost of this project's gonna be, and right now, we're planning about sixteen and a half million right now to do that project, okay? I know in the past, as soon as we had about thirteen million, if I remember right, so we've been working closer to, we feel that number's gonna come down as we work through the design, but right now, we want to plan for kind of the worst-case scenario with that chemical plant out there, but again, we're gonna talk about that a little bit more later. Project six is Mont Avenue Sanitary Sewer, fourth to Highway thirty-eight, and along with that is the Sixth Street improvements project, Mont Avenue to Van Mark Avenue, those are the two projects that you guys have been setting funds away each year in your general fund to be able to do that project, one's a sewer improvement project, one's a water improvement project, both of them probably involve, you know, street improvements along with it. Those are programmed in two thousand twenty-two, and then in two thousand twenty-three, we have project number eight, which is Kelly Avenue, south of Second Street and tying in the landmark, and in two thousand twenty-four, we have project number nine, which is Western Avenue, Nicholson Road to Highway, or to I ninety, that project we put in two thousand twenty-four, we really feel that'll probably be timed with the interchange when that project comes about, but we just want to include it in the five-year, just so we can see the number and be ready to plan for that project. Down below that is our future projects here, and, you know, I don't know if there's any really worth knowing in there, but we did want to know on Twelfth Street, that's been discussed by the council in the past, the possibility of doing a project there, we didn't, we didn't put it up in the five-year plan, because we really feel that project's developer-driven, and you know, once that project is a little clearer, and we can evaluate that area, we can start programming it into the year. Okay? As we flip through these pages, each page has a project, has a page dedicated to it just to give a little synopsis of what the project is, how it's gonna be funded, with the top column is an engineer estimate, and then the bottom column table here is a funding estimate, okay, where we're gonna draw the funds from, so you can see the estimate, and these numbers will add up across, but this gives you a little bit of a picture of what funds will be drawn for. So this is Ninth Street, we had a loan set up for it, the loan is roughly sixty-eight percent of the funding source on the project, we have some general fund money going in there, so cash from the general fund of eighty-five thousand, three hundred, then we had cash from the sewer fund to pay for the sewer improvements, and cash from the water fund to pay for the water improvements. Okay, so you can see each project as a glance as you go, as you go through those. Other than that, I guess I'd open up the questions, they're gonna have anything more presenting on that, but any questions on the CIP?
Where's the overlay for the proposed revenue that we can lay over the proposed debt?
Proposed revenue over the proposed debt? I don't have that.
Teresa let you know it.
Good question.
Yeah.
That's a little bit in the blue if you don't kind of factor in where the revenue's at.
Yeah, well, we'll be working on also with this as a rate study, okay, and that's where we'll take each fund, sewer and the water fund, and we'll look at them, we'll take all these projects into five-year, and decide what projects where we think we can pay in cash, what projects we need a loan for, and then we'll start projecting it out over time, so we can start making sure that the rates are gonna be in line with what it takes to build those projects, that's what we'll be working on next. And as we progress, and the wastewater is obviously the big, big animal out there, so as we're progressing through that, we'll be having a lot of conversations with the folks on how these costs will impact rates, so before we get, you know, real far down the road, we'll be having those conversations.
Does that number include reclaiming the pods?
No. That's simply, that's the construction dollars and the engineering and the land acquisition that goes through that, so that, that was cost that we had laid out there, and nineteen is the contract that we already have, the thirty thousand dollars to kind of negotiate the land acquisition, in two thousand twenty, we have the land purchased, go into that and some preliminary engineering, that's the one point one million dollars, and then in two thousand twenty-one is another one million dollars, and that's, you know, final design for us and getting it ready for bidding, and then two thousand twenty-two is the construction of whatever contract that might be. I know I shocked Teresa a little bit yesterday, I mean, just to put some of these projects in perspective, you know, we're working with Harris where their, their project is roughly a twenty-seven million dollar project that they're, that we're working on with them over there, so, you know, you're not as big as a community, you don't need as big a facility, I know John's looking at different options to bring that cost down to more of that thirteen, fourteen million dollar scenario, but we're gonna be working through those in the next two months here. Okay? Questions? Questions?
Would our wastewater treatment facility be upgradable as we grow?
Yes.
Expandable word.
That's the word I'm saying.
Yep.
Yep.
All right, anything else on this? Yeah, other than the overlay for the revenue pitch.
Just turn it on the one upside down.
Right. That's a good idea.
Oh, yeah, that looks, that looks bad.
Did you have anything else?
I didn't.
Okay. Teresa, you got anything to add to yours?
Um, with mine, it's like, you know, I talked with Scott Anderson at the county to let him know, you know, about our second joint jurisdiction meeting on the twenty-eighth of January, so he's gonna let all their planning commission and county commissioners know as well, um, about that. And I guess, kind of, the only thing is that on Nicholson Road, we did meet today with the state, uh, to kind of wrap up, you know, what is required with our SRL loan. And basically, it's, we just need to send them a few certificates and some shot drawings and, um, but pretty much all that loan, you know, everything that they need for loan will be wrapped up as soon as they get those documents. So all that went fine, they'll find one out then, so, um, otherwise, nothing, and I guess, new to my report.
Any questions for Teresa? All right. Old business. Can you discuss the possible park board slash? Can you give us a little background on this one, Teresa, or?
Um, well, as you guys know, we've discussed now a couple of times here about, um, possibly implementing either a park board or a committee that would act as, um, an entity kind of similar to the planning and zoning, as I see it. Anything related to the parks, whether it be, you know, the Swenson Park up there, or the city parks, or, you know, our outdoor recreation areas or activities would be filtered through this board for vetting before, you know, anything would come to the city council. So if there was a project for one of the parks, you know, they would come to this park board or committee, um, you know, present what they would like to have done, whether it be the soccer association, softball association, or even a group of citizens, they'd come to this park board, um, vet it through them, they would kind of make sure all the check boxes are marked, that, you know, they'll do kind of all the research of, okay, you know, what's it gonna take to do this, you know, where's the revenue, kind of, that stuff. Just kind of like the planning and zoning do as far as anything zoning-related. And then, um, if it's something that council action is needed as far as getting funds for, then it'd come to the council. So we've kind of discussed that a little bit of how it would work. Um, just kind of thrown out there, I've done kind of some research, and you guys have looked through that too, what other cities do. You know, we've tried to propose possibly setting up a seven-member board, just like planning and zoning. Five of those maybe be voting members, and then maybe putting someone from the council on that board as a non-voting, and then somebody from the city staff, whether it be Craig, or if we get another park director, that person on there as far as input from staff, and maybe non-voting too. Um, and then we just talk about, you know, setting up different terms and officers or whatnot, but, as we left it last time, you know, this has all just been discussion, and we really wanted to get some input from the organizations, um, the different organizations, um, and committees of how they felt, and maybe how, maybe we got some ideas of how this should be set up, or how we can organize this. So I did send out letters, I think, and a few of them are here, to soccer association, softball association, the West Central Baseball, um, our Bike and Rec Trail Committee, and then, of course, the Sports Complex Committee, so, um, I, I, I've only talked, I guess Troy Larson kind of gave me a little bit of feedback, and so, you know, um, he, but I really haven't talked with anybody else, so hopefully they've got some ideals or thoughts or feelings on it.
Troy, you wanna talk first? I know you like to talk.
It's like a good buffet, I'm not gonna be shy. First of all, thank you to the city leaders, to the years for being such great supporters of the Bike and Rec Trails Committee. We've got an outstanding trail system, thanks to the wonderful supports of the city. So whatever you decide to do, we will support. We've been asked to provide feedback, and so that's all I'm doing here, is providing feedback on behalf of the members of our, uh, committee. Originally, when I got the letter, we thought, our group thought what was being proposed was to do away with the committees and roll all the committees into this park board, which we wholeheartedly support. We think that's a great idea. We found out, no, that's not the intent. The intent is to keep the committees and then use this as kind of a vetting, uh, thing. Um, in our opinion, that extra, that's an extra layer of bureaucracy that's simply not needed. Rip the band-aid off, do it right, set up this park board and filter all the committees through that. In other words, dissolve the committees, various committees would be represented on this new park board and not have that extra layer of bureaucracy in between the committees and the council. So you accomplish the same thing, and kind of the feedback I got from Teresa was, the plan was not to start that way, but maybe three, four, five years, that's how it would end up. And again, our feedback is rip off the band-aid and just do it right the first time. So we think it's a, a good idea, just skip out, skip those intermediate three years or so. So that's just our feedback, take it for what's worth. Questions?
No, that makes, that makes sense. I mean, and I don't know that we've gotten to that exact point yet. You know, that's partially why we wanted to invite you guys all to come tonight, to see if there's any comments like that. I do think that makes sense, but I think we'd have to make sure that we had some buy-in from, because some of these guys are longstanding, as yours is, longstanding committees, you know?
And thus, you'd probably want to make sure we do it in a, you know, a six-month period or a year, have an opportunity to wrap up any loose ends. I know the only concern we have is we have roughly five thousand dollars in our account that has been donated for trail improvements. We would want to ensure that the intent behind those donations is met and that money is eventually used. So, yeah, I mean, you can't just say next month, we're gonna do this, you gotta have some planning coordination. But, you know, we're all civic-minded, even though I'm on a trail committee, I support the pool, I support the sports complex. Uh, you just need to get people on this board that can see the whole picture and not be parochial about their one particular issue.
The, the problem I have with that, Troy, is the city, the city spent money to form all these nonprofits. And one of the intentions of having nonprofits is a nonprofit can go after funding that the city can't go after with grants and, and whatnot. So if you make all those go away, and it's just a park board, a park board wouldn't be a nonprofit. And then we're back to not being able to go after funding that a nonprofit could, or a park board or the city can't.
Could it be created in the same vein where it's not part of the city government, it's a committee, but instead of having five, six committees, you have one?
I don't know.
But, but that's a fair question.
That's a good question, yeah.
Yeah, because we have, we've been beneficiary of some really nice grants, thanks to Teresa's research. So, yeah, you wouldn't want to lose that, and surely, you can accomplish this somehow by condensing or consolidating all the committees into one entity and still accomplish that goal, but, very good point.
Ultimately, it'd have to be a nonprofit, I would assume.
You'd have to set it up as a committee versus a board, you know, you don't want to set it up as a board through state statute, because you're right, then they'll be restricted, but maybe we set it up as a committee. We could set it up as a nonprofit status, yeah, just, just like the current committee, yeah.
We will support whatever you want to do, that's just our feedback. Next.
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Troy.
Thanks, Troy.
Any other guys want to speak to it, or?
I'll just, uh, I guess, for, for the, sorry, Matt, I've been sports and rec committee. Um, just hearing about it, so I just came, and I think many of our members just came to understand what the, the purpose was. Um, a lot of us just heard about this when we got the letter, basically, you know, at the beginning of, at the beginning of the new year. So for us, um, you know, we don't know the, the purpose behind it is. Um, Troy put that it, it does make sense, just hearing his, his point of view, that it would be an extra layer. Um, you know, as, as you guys are all aware, that many of our committees, we do have trouble keeping people on, you know, for a number of years, that type of thing. So if this was to streamline it, to streamline it, um, I could see benefits, um, from that, and then I, we would also have the same concerns of the money that's set aside already, um, you know, for particular projects down the road, that they, they would go that route. But I think, um, you know, if it was to streamline things and move things forward, you know, a little more quickly and efficiently, then, then I would be, you know, as for, but that's just me speaking. We haven't had a time, you know, to discuss this as a, you know, rec committee. Um, we have our meeting this, this Sunday, but part of it was just being here to kind of hear the, the views and the vision of the particular, um, this committee then.
Yep. Well, I think that's good. I don't know if we're at a point where we're ready to vote on this thing. I think we probably need to have, I know this is Jeremy really, Jeremy's been fueling this, I wish he was here tonight.
And I think it'd be good, like Matt pointed out, for their committee to get a chance to, to talk about it, kind of vet it through, you know, talk about pros and cons, and, you know, we can discuss again.
And I talked to Travis, we're planning on coming to you guys coming Sunday night, so.
And I guess it would be helpful, sorry, if, I know Mayor Manny's not here, but if this was some of his, if there's more background of why. I mean, if, if there's some of the positives you, that he thinks would be coming from this compared to our current, you know, um, way of doing things, you know, it'd be good to hear, hear that as well, as far as the background behind it, or what the, you know, prevailing factor is, I guess, going this route.
Right.
I wonder if it's partly, for lack of a better term, manpower involvement. I mean, if you got five committees that need five to ten people involved versus seven.
Right.
I don't know. I could see that as being advantaged to do it, but, um,
if my memory served me, part of the, the other thing that this board would serve, uh, as would be, somewhat steer the direction of the Park and Rec Director, having had that position, and maybe not having the accountability that we were looking for from a set position. This board would clearly ask that individual to follow a set of criteria, or the outline for the, for the year, for the three-year, for the five-year plan.
A little bit of authority versus a volunteer committee.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep, yep, that's a scam game.
And there's been some mention and conversation that, you know, you'd want to have that contact with Craig. You know, we kind of volunteered Craig pretty quick to a lot of things, but he'd probably be a good asset on this deal. So with the field maintenance and the connection with the city, city staff, you know, not that I'm taking Teresa off the hook, but Craig would probably be the.
Hey, okay.
And I think that could, you know, that could help with this committee, you know, maybe level out some of that stuff and make sure we had a, had a good focus. I like, I like that one-three-five deal, if we can get going down that path, so.
We'll try to get the mayor there Sunday night.
Yeah, we will, we'll try to get Jeremy to come, so. And, uh.
Teresa, are these the only towns that you know that have committees or boards?
Um, around here, yeah, and, and then Jesse Thoreau, Old Bridge had it too, so we had to try to get him. Yeah.
So what we're looking at is Harrisburg has a park board, T, Brandon, just some local, um, communities. So with that knowledge, as you get to your jobs and talk to folks, maybe you can start to pull some information from those residents and see what they do and don't like about it, or if they're even aware that they have one. Two of those have pretty large sports complexes. Uh, with Harrisburg. Uh, Harrisburg not, but.
Brandon.
Not, 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 uh, they have Team Brandon.
Craig, does Brandon have a person dedicated just to parks? Like, uh, going, just that turf and all that?
I couldn't tell you for sure. Yeah, they do.
They do?
They do.
Any other towns that are down here? T and Harrisburg?
Harrisburg, yeah.
They've got a guy that's dedicated also, Harrisburg does, they also have a park board. I don't know, T.
All right, well, we'll have a little more chance, maybe Sunday night, when we got all you guys together, we'll, we can have a little more conversation. Travis is right, we get Jeremy to come along, we'll, uh.
If I could make a recommendation before we get to Far Dinesh.
Yep.
I really think this council as a whole needs to have at least a consensus of what we need done. Because Travis has ideas, Jeremy has ideas, pardon you do. We, we all have ideas. And ultimately, we're gonna have to have a consensus of those ideas. Because if we don't, not gonna happen. So there, there's a lot to hash out long before we try to figure out if it's a board or it's a committee. Or if, because Travis, you made a comment that a board would oversee a direct, or could oversee a direct. But, see, like, that's your idea. You, you would, because without, without four of six, that's just an idea. We, we truly need to figure out what we want to happen, and then figure out what path to go down to make that happen.
I guess overseas is the right word. This group would provide some input to that director on what they would like to see. The director would then come to us, say, this is the direction that this group would like to move. Then this board gives consensus to that direction.
No, and, and don't get me wrong, I agree, but right now, we're just talking in a million directions. And with, without this council having a consensus of what problems we need resolved, where we're going, where the finish line is, we're never gonna get there. So not, not without a consensus of what the problem is, what the solution is, and how to move forward to get there. And whether that's the committees rolling into another committee, or the committees under a board, I don't know what that looks like. But until four of the six of us get on the same page, we'll never get to that, so.
So who do we have represented here this evening? We obviously have Troy from the Bike Mike Trail, man, with soccer, right?
Sure, it's sports and rec.
Sports and rec.
Softball.
Softball, softball, baseball, Mike.
No, softball.
Softball, Dan.
Soccer. Sports and rec.
Sports and rec.
I mean, we're, several of us are.
Multi-ham.
Well, as far as with soccer, we don't have a soccer association.
Right.
So there's not a, you know, we still go through separate, you know, alliances and that, that thing, but many of our, I know Dan's, myself, are interested in why we got this sports and rec, we have to do with soccer.
Right.
And most committees won't ever, will they? Soccer, softball.
Oh, yeah, you guys will have your, yeah. So you just need to run your, your programs, yeah.
All right, I think Mark's right, I think we can, for right now, we can kind of move her forward and.
Keep the discussion.
Yeah, we'll keep discussing this, and we'll come and, if you guys are buying, we'll be there Sunday night.
Erase that out of the.
Before you get hit, hearts.
Erase that part of it.
All right. Discussion of Community Engagement Meeting. Thanks, guys. Uh, this is the meeting that Jeremy and Jesse, are you involved with this too? Uh, this is the meeting that Jeremy and Jesse, are you involved with this too? Are proposing that we'd like to have for a open style, open house style, different stations. Mayor would like to do a short introduction and then, well, the guests can go from table to table and discuss different issues that come up around the city. Uh, we're looking at two different weeks, either the week of the 17th or the week of the 24th of February. And two people have responded to Teresa's request.
Yep, I think Travis, you said you're pretty free the one of those weeks and you work except for the 21st.
Yeah, except for that Friday, yeah.
So if we could get a date or two, we, we would like to try to secure a venue. We're looking at the school, but without a date, we really don't, you know.
I can't, I can't make 17th, but I can make 24th.
And it doesn't have to be that specific date, just any, anytime in that week.
18th is council.
Yeah, the 18th is council, 17th is actually a holiday, 18th is council, so.
We want to try to shoot for that last week of the month, like the 25th or 6th of them.
25th, you have plenty of zoning on. Either make 24th or 26th.
24th or the 26th, and you said, Mark, you couldn't make the 24th?
I can.
You can.
I can, I can make anything the last week.
Make that work. Let's just pick that, February 24th.
See if we can either get the 24th, maybe back with the 26th if we can't get the school.
Right. Now let's shoot for the 24th for our initial date.
Okay, shoot for that one.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna talk to the school then?
Yeah, I think, now that we've got a couple of dates, I think Jesse was gonna contact us, because we have the availability to see if we can line something up there. And then kind of basically, as you kind of went over, Jesse, the mayor, myself, have kind of thought, you know, he wants to bring the community in, just make an open house style so they can come and go and maybe have different stations or tables set up and with different subject matters, you know, we've kind of come up with the ones that we put in your packet. Taxes always seems to kind of be a lot of questions always on that, quality of life issues, the goals of the city, infrastructure, economic development and public safety. You guys have any other thoughts? I think, but we thought those might hit kind of the main questions people have out there and let them come in, kind of, you know, here's what the city does for this, whether it be public safety, you know, how many hours we patrol, let them fill their questions, see if they think that's good, not good, you know, just kind of get some feedback and it, feedback and input from them, so. You know, I know he'll want everyone there, probably planning zoning and staff will, will try to kind of man in. We'll, we'll do some more planning, but now that we got a date, we can kind of get started from there. Sound good?
Just looking forward on the agenda, I mean, another subject would be what we currently have in place, which is already planning, joint planning.
Right.
And then the, uh, how do we word this? Well, we'll finish with the annexation agreement. Yeah, we currently have an annexation agreement.
What, yeah.
In place.
Yep, just like with the plot coming up.
Yeah, that comes with your plating jurisdiction.
Right, right. So I think there's some education that needs to happen with that as well. So that would be another subject.
I mean, that is a whole other subject, plating, joint jurisdiction, this, what's different about them, what each one of them does, what comes with it.
That was the thing in, with my group that I heard repeatedly, what's plating jurisdiction, how do you have that? How do we, how come we don't know about that? Well, because they're almost mirrored.
Right. Right, right. But, but there are differences, so, yeah.
And there's another step, as we'll see as we move forward in our agenda.
Yeah, so that is, that is a good one that could be a whole other topic.
All right, anything else on that? Next up, old business, discussion of lots two through eight, block four of Hartford City proper. This is the land that we have we voted, or we voted to shoot them an offer and Jesse, that to date, that has been rejected, correct?
Was there a counter or was just, no, this, it's X, you offered Y, see the door?
You know, we, we had. We got to that process earlier in the quarter four of 2019, and they were firm on 95 grand. Now.
Can we, where did we come in at again? I can't quite remember.
The motion was for 75.
As you recall, I voted no. I voted no with the intention that it wasn't gonna be enough to get there, so that proved true.
Recommendations you have just?
Uh, to read the offer as presented at the last meeting.
Okay.
I'll make the offer, the 95,000, the last two days, Hartford.
Second, discussion.
I'm sorry, could I hear you again, please? Read it back.
The motion was.
To make an offer of 95,000.
Yep.
Okay. And Jesse, um, without having gone into much detail, I remember you saying that you had some ideas, intent, um, has anything changed since that discussion?
No, I didn't think it was prudent to reach out to a prospect without enough, without any information at the time. So before I reach out to the prospect, I wanted to answer tonight to see if where things were gonna go.
How do you see this different from, um, the South Main build that we did? That right, where's, is your address, Mark, down there?
What I'm through.
Okay. So next to that neighborhood, we obviously invested in that with the same intent, okay? How do you see this being different from that?
That land is being developed differently. That area is an interesting mix of commercial, industrial, residential. And it has been problematic to sell. We've tried the selling approach. The selling approach hasn't necessarily been the most successful to try to make it a commercial corridor. Um, the zoning is community commercial as well, so it's a little bit different. The land can't be utilized the same way. So for the downtown land that we're talking about tonight, it's owned, from my understanding, central business district, so it can be built out in a different way. And we see that being a similar deal as, as was utilized to secure the brewery.
Okay.
Don't know how much you get into this, but I'll just ask, there's some contingencies on the offer, I assume?
There would be. I recommend that we do a phase one environmental assessment, just to see what we're getting ourselves into. My thought is that in part of the land is, is most certainly developed, in part might not be developed.
So there, the way this would work, they say, yep, we like the offer, then we'd start a contract process with contingencies and make sure it's. Okay, I'm good.
Is there a statute on that? I mean, is there a limitation as far as timeframe from the study to the time the offer is made?
You're just gonna write it all into the terms.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion?
So we have a chi, if, I understand, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, um, we have the contract drawn, it has the stipulations. I just, um, once we say approve this and they would approve the 95K, in essence, am I wrong by saying there's no outside being environmental? Is that my, is making sense?
Your term and, and conditions are going to be that they're able to convey to you the property by a fee simple title. That is free and clear of all encumbrances, that it passes the envi- the phase one environmental. And I assume it's gonna say that if the place is dirty from an environmental standpoint, that you can walk away from the contract or parties will renegotiate it depending upon the cost to clean up.
Okay.
I miss anything, Jesse?
That's it, that's exactly what we're looking to do.
Any other discussion?
Last question.
Yep.
Have we got a, a ballpark on the environmental?
Uh, the ENR through an EPA program is able to offer this, uh, phase one or phase two program at no charge to both cities and nonprofits. So it should cost nothing, that money is, should be available. If it's not, then it'll bring back your attention for consideration. That's what we did for the lot on the corner of Menth and Main. It was the DE, environmental assessment program that cost the foundation, no money to have that study done.
Okay.
All right, we're good? We'll vote. Nelson.
I'll go first, just take her. Yes.
Keel.
Yes.
Brennaman.
Yep.
Monahan?
No.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
The next on the agenda, we want to discuss that now or we want to discuss that?
Um, I guess if you have questions for the attorney, we can discuss it in executive.
Executive? I think we'll, we'll discuss that in the executive session if that's. We'll go on to new business, review, approve, county plat of block four eight and eight eight and lot two of Brower addition.
So kind of what Travis is alluding to, this is the plat of land that's out in the county, so it's right across the interstate out in Brower's addition. And since we have plating jurisdiction with the county, anything that gets platted within our growth area needs to come through the city first for approval before it can go to the county. So this went to, um, first of all, it was reviewed by the city engineers and it's in correct form and manner for the city. It went to the planning and zoning board last week, they approved it, and now it's coming before you guys for approval. Basically, like I said, it's in, it's up with our regulations in the correct form and manner. We do require as part of our new subdivisions that we adopted in 2018, a pre-annexation agreement. I haven't got to sign one of that yet, so if we approve the plat, I would say make it contingent that we receive a pre-annexation agreement from the owner. And I did talk to the owner today, they called me later this afternoon, and they're not real happy about it, but I think they're gonna sign it.
He understands that it's really on the right.
Yeah, yeah, and then we kind of talked through that. It, it doesn't mean that tomorrow we're gonna do it, or doesn't mean that when we cross the interstate or touch the, it's gotta actually bud up from these, and we've got to request it. I mean, we may butt up to it and not request it anyway, so we kind of talked about the timeframe of that, that it's could be quite a few years down the road.
Just a little background on this, I got a call from Vance saying, hey, what? I can't use Vance's, it's sack worries.
I'm sure you can't.
But I ran into this something, Rock, and I went to the county, what's going on? He's about to spin the place for a few years already, this joint plating. He says Teresa's out of the office, this is gonna delay my project till the end of January, yada, yada, yada. So thank you, thank, thanks to Teresa, she came in on her vacation and kept the ball rolling, got an agenda put together, got it posted so that, saying zoning could have their meeting and then approve this plat to give it to us, so we can. Probably affects the project by two weeks in reality, given our weather, it may not affect the project at all, but it becomes a mindset. And hopefully this individual will speak well of the city's efforts to work with him. It does point to some delinquencies in our office, like if somebody's out, there's nobody to do what Teresa does. We have no contingency plan.
And he did call, you know, when I was out, he, he did call Tony with Gordon, and he gave me a call, which I was happy. Called you and then called you, right? Oh, and then, okay, you called, oh, all right, so I, yeah.
Yeah, he called me, I called Tony.
Tony called me, gotcha. So I mean, yeah, I had no problem coming in and getting the agenda going so that the planning and zoning board could meet, yeah, earlier.
Yeah, it seemed, you know, again, I just want to make sure that we got it on public record that there was some hoops that were jumped through and I know, I appreciate it, I think that the party appreciated it, but it did bring to light some concerns like what if, what if Teresa wouldn't have been available? What if, you know, there was another situation. So it points to some areas in our own process that we should streamline. And if we're gonna move down the road with joint jurisdiction, it brings up some weaknesses in our system that we need to address to help put some minds at rest, how those processes go, in my opinion. Teresa, I mean, I'll leave that up to you as far as how in, in city hall here we can, if Karen can be.
We've actually, um, during the evaluation process, I've actually talked with Karen a little bit more about handling some of those, getting her more familiar with building permits and the such, so when I am out of the office, it doesn't delay anybody going in and shifting a few other duties to her, so we're trying to kind of work through that, cause we realize that's kind of an issue, so.
Tony, do you have anything you want to add?
Brad, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward thing, he's moving one property line, it'll allow them to put buildings that they want to do and get their setbacks under their property. That's the reason for moving it, it's one property line, just slide it over within the property.
So the part that does actually move it, 12 feet or something? 20 feet?
It's not, we did not, we did not receive any drawings that gave us exact dimensions there, other, other than here's, here's what it is and here's what it proposed.
It was 178 and it's moving to 213 to 14.
Yeah, it looks like it's 20, 25 feet or something.
Remains two lots, nothing else changes, just move the line in between the two lots, so we have no problems at all. You know, our, as Teresa said, our recommendation is to approve it contingent on receiving the pre-annexation agreement. No pre-annexation agreement? No approval, no quote.
Well, a motion to approve the plat as submitted, contingency that an annexation, annexation agreement is executed prior to, um,
Approval of the plat.
Approval of the plat.
Does that sound there?
You'd have to, cause you actually submitted.
Yeah, we have to all sign here, so I won't sign it until he comes in with that, and that was our discussion this afternoon, so.
Okay. Got a motion? Anybody want to second?
Did I stumble through that well enough, Karen?
Yeah.
If we don't approve the plat, basically the individual can't build his building.
Yeah, cause he can't go to the county unless we approve the plat, so. I mean, he, he'd have to work with how the lots are now, he wouldn't be able to replant it how he'd like.
Correct, correct. He currently is in violation of our setbacks, in the county setbacks, from his property line, where he wants to put the building, as I understood it.
I haven't seen anything.
Yeah, this, this puts him in compliance.
We would allow him to be in compliance with his plan that he wants to do for the building currently, it would not fit the county zoning setback rules.
Do we have a motion? Do I have a second?
I don't, Adam, you have a second, then?
I don't think so.
You have an open second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Yeah, that's why, I'm waiting for a second. I'm trying to do things, you know. Gee, as I do this three times a year, I'm trying to do it, you know. All right, any other discussion? If not, we'll vote. Monahan?
Yeah.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
And I'll be a yes. That's a lot of work for that, little deal right there, just palin it, little something extra in there. Little something extra in there. It's not from face docking for that hill, I guess. Uh, next on the agenda, release the twenty twenty, yeah, I got my own. Uh, release the twenty twenty budget funds for the Hartford area development foundation, forty-six thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, just a question. They don't have the president here, but Jesse, are you able to speak on matters?
Yep.
Other assets. Six lots west of South Street.
Yep.
We value those at one dollar.
Our, our accountant did.
I understand, okay.
We had a value different number.
Okay.
He changed it back in December to a dollar.
Okay. Is that because that's what they paid for?
I don't know. He was directed back in November to have it at fifteen thousand dollars per lot, and he was directed to take the other parcel off of it. He hasn't done either of those things, he's no longer our accountant.
I understand that wasn't totally your, totally all your doing, but I understand you're looking for a new accountant.
Yep, those, those will be, um, corrected in January.
It doesn't really change anything. I mean, you guys didn't spend any money on those lots.
Just the, just for the low market.
So at a minimum, it should have maybe what you have invested into it.
Yeah, two thousand dollars.
You should have a discrepancy with your new account.
Yep.
But as a maximum, it'd be fifteen thousand per lot.
Or a balance sheet, you should have what's estimated at.
Yeah, for sure.
We agree.
Yeah, this makes the balance sheet look a little.
Weak.
There you go, that's a good word.
All right, any more discussion? Not? Well, well, Brandon?
Yeah.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
I'll be a yes. All right, last one on new business, release twenty twenty budget funds for the Hartford area chamber. They're asking for thirty-two thousand, sorry, Scott.
That's right, I stepped on you, so moved.
Second?
Any discussion on that? Not? Well, vote Keel?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Correspondents? Not only the state government, executive sessions, nobody want to make that a motion, go into executive session?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
You know, you've been in charge of one more meeting than the mayor there for about this year.
That's exactly right. We, we kicked her off with a fan.
We're gonna add four executive in personnel.
Four executive in personnel.
Okay.
Okay, and we voted, right?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Or not for exec, for, yeah, we're sorry, you know what I mean.
Show any ballgame.
Okay, go on.
Are they entertaining? Motion due, Karen?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.